Just hope I make it through. I'm about seventy-five percent, but I'm much better.
Sheri Berkery, she part of your group?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes, I apologize. Okay.
All right, it's six oh one. Are you ready to go? Everybody?
We're missing one person, I think. Wait, one, two, three. No, no, Joe's here. No, we're good. We got all seven.
Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the--
I don't, are we live?
Yes, we are.
Okay, I apologize, okay.
Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the December third, two thousand and twenty Clinton Board of Education meeting. Can I have a motion?
No, roll call.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Abidrabo. I'm sorry, you. Ms. Bass, Ms. Beltran.
Here.
Mr. Canova.
Yeah.
Mr. Daley. I see he's saying yes. Mr. Casper.
Here.
Mr. Pacenti. I see him saying yes, too. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Danny is absent. Ms. Bassford.
I'm here. Can I have a motion to convene into executive order, executive session to discuss various contract matters? We will convene within, we will come back within an hour. We will start at seven o'clock, or do we need more time, as we see?
We should be done in an hour. We--
Okay, so we'll be back at, with six oh two, we'll be back at, say, seven oh five.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Pacenti, second by Mr. Canova, roll call.
Mr. Abidrabo. Sorry, yeah. Mr. Abidra-- yeah. Ms. Beltran.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Mr. Daley.
Yes.
Mr. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Pacenti.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Bassford.
Yes. Mr. Mountain, do what you need to do.
Okay, one moment. Andrea and Sheri, you should see a notice to go to the breakout room.
I don't see it.
I'll look for that, thanks.
Oh, I have to hit continue. Okay, didn't see that part. Okay, join.
Sheri, if you hear me, you might have to hit, you have to hit continue to get into the breakout room.
Um, okay, thank you. I'm going to see if I can figure it out. I'm in the car. I'll be home in another few minutes if I need to look at it on the laptop. So I want to give it a try.
Okay.
All right, thanks so much.
Hi, Alexa and Rodney. I just invited you to the breakout room. You might have to click continue. Rodney, I just invited you to the breakout room. You might have to say okay or continue. Okay.
We're waiting on Ms. Ms. Beltran. Okay, everybody's here.
All of our guests can be excused, correct?
Yes, yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 3rd, 2020. I'm sorry, January, December 3rd, 2020. Not that I want this year to end any faster than anybody else. December 3rd, 2020, Board of Education meeting. All priests rise for the pledge allegiance.
Can we do a roll call first?
Do you want to do a roll call? Okay, do a roll call.
Mr. Abdalbo. Ms. Beltran.
Here.
Mr. Canova.
Here.
Mr. Daley.
Here.
Mr. Casper.
Here.
Mr. Pacenti.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Bassford.
Here. Okay, all please rise for the pledge allegiance. And a moment of silence for all our our first responders during this time of COVID. I hope they remain safe. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation against God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Thank you. I am, I was asked to apologize for Ms. Danny. She is not feeling well tonight, so she is not going to be in attendance of our meeting. Mr. Casper, would you please read the mission statement?
Sure. The mission of the Clifton School District in an open and reciprocal community partnership is to provide all students with the quality education to develop the skills necessary to become literate lifelong learners who are responsible and productive citizens, contributing to a democratic society in an ever-changing world.
Thank you. Reading of the Open Public Meetings Act. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right to the public to have advance notice of and attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with this provision of the act, the Clifton Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized, having the time, the date, and place thereof posted at the City Clerk's office, Clifton Public Library Administration Building, Senior Citizen Nutrition Center, on cable TV, in the local press, on the district's website, and mailed to the presidents of parent-teacher organizations. This meeting will be taped, recorded in accordance with policy number 0168. Adoption of minutes.
So moved.
Is everybody able to open their attachments? Great. Okay, so I need a, I need a motion for, you want to do it all in one? Or do we need to separate it out?
I was gonna, I'll move 12, 3, 20. And all 12, 3, 20s, which is executive, executive meeting of number one, October 15th, and meeting number two of October 15th.
Okay. I have first Gary and second with Mr. Abdalbo. Roll call.
One second. All right, Mr. Abdalbo.
Yes.
Ms. Beltran.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Mr. Daley. I see him saying yes. Mr. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Pacenti.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And Ms. Bassford.
Yes. Adoption of the minutes for November 12th, 2020, and executive and regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Canova. Roll call.
I have a question. Were these correct? I just wanted to make sure these were corrected, because these are the ones that we put, we put back on the meeting.
Yes.
Mr. Abdalbo. Ms. Beltran.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Mr. Daley. He voted online, actually. Mr. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Pacenti.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Bassford.
Yes. Okay, communications and announcements. Do we have any, none? No. First policy, first reading of policy. This is all in the policy minutes, but there's a 0142, board member qualifications prohibits acts including nepotism and cronyism and the code of ethics. It's, it's a mandated policy. 0144, board member orientation. 0164.6, remote public board meetings during a declared emergency, and that was mandatory. All right, that was first reading. Presentations from administration advisory committees and special committees. Mr. Jengaro, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Just give me one moment, commissioners, as I share the screen.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mr. Jengaro, tonight will be presenting our student safety data system report period two. This is the report that used to be called the Violence and vandalism report. We're required to report these numbers to the Board of Education two times per year. And then he'll also be presenting our school self-assessment for determining grades under the anti-bullying bill of rights. Those are two major things that fall under Mr. Jengaro's job title, among many others.
Just give me one second. I'm having Just give me one skin, I'm having a difficult time sharing a. No, we're so used to the Google platform.
Looking at your notes itself, Mr. Jengaro, and I love it.
Please just bear with me. Give me one second, can please?
We can see your screen, Mr. Jengaro. If you just pull up your slides on your screen, we'll see it.
Unfortunately, Mr. Mount, I am unable to even see the slides on my screen.
Mr. Jengaro, if you can email me the presentations, I could share my screen. And perhaps, Ms. Bassford, perhaps we want to move the presentation after Board Committee reports?
Sure, let's go to Board Committee reports. I'm gonna start. Mr. Casper, are you ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to wrap this up as best I could.
You're presenting the delegates assembly minutes, right?
Delegate Assembly, yes. So, um. Okay, so our meeting started with the NJ SBA President welcoming everybody to the meeting. He provided the delegates with his report. The NJ SBA has stepped up since March because of COVID. So we've had to use a lot more technology to help us get through the pandemic. We, as boards, are staying connected with each other through county and virtual meetings. We, as boards, are also focusing on the education of our students through the pandemic. We had a new Board Member of the Year this year. Her name is Irene Lefar from the Booton Town Board of Education. Dr. Larry Feinsa had provided his research to us. He. He recognized all of the attendees at today's delegate assembly. At this year's virtual workshop, over six thousand people attended for over four hundred and seventy school boards. There were over a hundred sessions and a hundred and forty exhibits that were all virtual. The NJ SBA has also continued to provide virtual programs throughout the pandemic, which includes sixteen online programs, webinars, Facebook Lives, posts on social media, and podcasts. County Association meetings and training programs will continue through the year. He introduced Dr. Angela Allen McMillan, our new Acting Commissioner of Education. We are going to have the fifth annual Steam Tank Challenge this coming year, but it's going to be virtual due to the pandemic. We have five goals for the two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one school year. There's going to be a three-day virtual workshop where Dr. Feinsa is looking to continue NJ SBA's online university, providing essential products and services, Sustainable Jersey Digital Learning Initiative, and research for the pandemic's impact on education. There will be a virtual new board, new board member training in two thousand and twenty-one for newly elected board members. The new committee that is being started, that will be started for two thousand and twenty-one is called the Two Thousand and Twenty-One Moving Forward Committee. It's going to continue to provide training and support for the districts throughout the state. Um, the resolution that we voted on, which had a lot of discussions and resolutions, discussion and revisions. I'm gonna read you the original one, and I'm gonna read you the one finally voted on. Okay, so the Lowdy Board of Education proposed new policy language supporting the requirement that a board member with a term of office extending beyond the new election must currently held, extending beyond the new election must currently held before submitting a nominating petition to stand as a candidate for a seat different than the seat currently held. So what they're saying is the NJ SBA believes that a board member with a term of office extending beyond the next election should resign the current currently held seat before submitting a nominating petition to become a candidate for a board seat different than the seat currently held. So here, I'm gonna I'm gonna read you the resolution that had passed. The NJ SBA believes that a board member whose seat is not up for reelection in the upcoming election cycle shall not be eligible to submit a nominating. Where am I here? Okay, here we go. Sorry about that. The NJ SBA believes that a board member whose seat is not up for reelection in the upcoming election cycle should resign the seat currently held before submitting a nominating petition to become a candidate for a board seat other than the seat currently held by the board member on the same board. So essentially, essentially candidates that want to run for an office other than their board seat must resign their board seat is what this resolution had come down to. I know it was kind of long and arduous, but does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Casper, it passed?
Yes, it passed.
The amended resolution passed, right?
Yes, the resolution, the one I just read passed one fourteen to seventeen.
Any que- no questions? Okay, thank you. Mr. Jengaro, we're gonna finish with the committee reports, and then we're gonna let you go after the, we have a couple of committee reports, okay?
Perfect.
I'm gonna do policy, and then we're gonna follow by legislative, finance, if you would want to do both of them at the same time, and then we'll do facilities. So, um, the Policy Committee met on November twenty-fourth. The Policy Committee began five oh four, we were remote. In attendance were myself, board members Joe Canova, Frank Casper, and Jim Smith. And from administration, we had Dr. Danny Robertazzi, Mark Teigen, Luis Ross. Also present was high school principal Michael Doctor. Number one, the committee reviewed and recommended adoption of Strauss Ismay's mandated bylaw zero one six four point six remote public board meetings during a declared emergency with the following changes, we selected shall in section two, D two B, and inserted board secretary in D six A, and selected accept, and deleted the words text-based in D six B, and selected five in D six C. I know it sounds convoluted, but the whole policy was, is, is, we really went over quite, quite lengthy. Number two, the committee reviewed policy twenty-three oh four for field trips and is recommending to administration to delete the word ultimately in accompanying regulations in section B two, which would require that all overnight trips must be approved by the principal and the Board of Education. Number three, the committee recommends amending bylaws oh one four two board member qualifications prohibits prohibited acts of code of ethics to include the following language under prohibited acts, no board member or member or his or her immediate family shall initiate or have any contact communication with outside vendors, agencies, and or organizations regarding any business or contracts or potential business and or contracts with the district. Any, any and all such communications shall go through the Office of the Superintendent. Number four, the committee reviewed and discussed bylaw oh one four four board member orientation, and we're recommending adopting the same with the proposed amendments as indicated in the attachment. We want to get that done tonight, so the second reading will be January meeting, so it will take in effect. So when we had to have a new board member, that that whole bylaw will take effect. The committee discussed the possibility of offering reduced tuition for children and staff of staff members who do not live in the district. This matter will be taking up at for future meetings. We only had a discussion on it, no action was taken. The meeting was adjourned at six oh eight, and Mr. Ross submitted the minutes. Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Legislative, Mr. Abdalbo.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Uh, Clifton Board of Education Legislative Meeting, November nineteenth, from six ten, six thirty-five, board members were myself, Phoebe Abdalbo, Mr. Jim Daly, Ms. Judy Bassford, and Mr. Joe Canova, administration superintendent Danny Robertazzi, Michael Uche, and intern Rachel Harrington. Number one, potential additional funding from city or county sources. There was discussion regarding reaching out to the city manager of Clifton State County offices and Clifton State County offices and the state legislature and governor's office about additional funding sources for COVID nineteen relief. Additional funding would be used to help purchase more digital devices, internet hotspots, purified water stations, air purifiers, et cetera. It was noted that State County had used COVID nineteen-related funds on items given to the Patterson BoE, should say they are through the city Patterson. Dr. Robertozzi will reach out to the city of Clifton City Manager Nick Bolano to see if he was aware of such funding. Administration and the committee wanted an answer on if the budget schedule and state aid numbers will be released as usual, or if there was a delay. After there will be a delay, excuse me. Administration will continue to monitor the budget schedule, which is typically released in January and updates from the DOE. Any questions? Okay.
No questions, thank you. Um, finance meeting, Mr. Daly.
Okay. Um, Clifton Board of Education Finance Committee, November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, commenced at five forty-five PM and concluded at six oh five PM. Board members present, Ms. Beltran, Mr. Canova, Ms. Passenti, and myself, administrators, Mr. Robertozzi, Mr. UC, Tom Sevich. Items of discussion, number one, budget calendar for twenty-one to twenty-two. Mr. UC presented a budget calendar for the development of the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two budget. The Business Office will discuss with Department, the Department Director, Supervisors, and Principals their area of, the area of the budget from November to January to develop preliminary budget to prevent the committee, to present to the committee sometime late January or February. Budget schedule with the DOE is tentative until release of the budget calendar in January. State aid member, state aid numbers will typically be released at the end of February. The preliminary budget is typically due to the county office at the end of March, with final budget being in the beginning of May. Board of Education meetings will be scheduled to be, to the budget deadlines. Number two, audit calendar for twenty nineteen, twenty. Mr. UC stated that the annual audit of the twenty-one to nineteen, twenty budget started in November. It should be completed by the first week of December. Typically, the audit is due December fifth, however, the date has been extended to February fifth due to the audit firm's backlog with the extension of municipal audits due date. Number three, CARES, Coronavirus Relief Grant Update. Mr. UC is stated that the district received two point three million dollars in CARES funding, which can be spent through December twenty-two. The district recently received a coronavirus relief grant from the DOE in the amount of one million, twenty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars, which is needed to, and which will needed to be encumbered by December. This additional funding was freed up. CARES money, which can be spent through the, through the next two years. Security grant and water grant update. Administration will be applying for the leases law compliance security grant of five hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, which is the American, which was the emergency notification system installed in every school. All administration will be applying for the water grant, which at this time does not have an amount allocate allocated for the DOE. The grant will help with purifying water fountains, station initiative throughout the district. ADL, KPM, legal fees to date, fees for the forensic law, for the forensic audit of a time and material contract with discuss, KPMG has contacted, has contracted, contracted already up to fifty thousand dollars. The district spent forty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. The district's legal costs were minimal at this point in time because they, we, we, because it had only considered of inquiry calls to prosecutor's office. Pending legislation, S twenty-six nine one, Mr. UC presented a new legislation that has passed the state senate. To the day, it is, is writing to be passed by the state senate. Then to be signed by the governor, the legislation would allow school districts to increase fund balance cap from two percent of the opening budget to four percent of the operating budget for the next two budget cycles. Updates to follow. Number seven, NJ E H P, budget concerns. Excuse me. The administration shared in New Jersey, stated that the New Jersey Education and Health Plan will be in effect starting January first, two thousand and one. For any employee who wishes to switch to the plan, employees who switch into the plan will be paying a portion of the salary for health benefits and not the chapter seventy-eight premium, premium contribution. This could have a severe impact on the current and future budget. The Business Office will monitor the closely with the with medical insurance broker and report back to the committee in the new year. That's, lose my minutes, and anybody has any question, I'll be happy to address them.
Any questions? Okay, Mr. Daly, can you read a second finance minutes, and then we'll go to Mr. Passenti for facilities?
Let me do the November thirtieth, too.
Yes, please.
Sure. You got it. Just popping up here. Hey, Board of Education Finance Committee, November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, commence, oh, I'm muted. Okay, you hear me?
You're good.
Okay. Um. Board members present was Ms. Belgium, Ms. Canova, Mr. Presenti, myself. Administration was Dr. Robertozzi. Okay, you hear me? Mike UC and Eric Tom Sevich. Mark Teigen and Janina Kuzlevich. Items of discussion, potential additional grant money. Dr. Robertozzi has reached out to Ms. Bolano, city manager, regarding the knowledge of additional grants that help aid school districts that could come from the city or the county level. He directed Dr. Rotosi to the city, to the city grants writer, where, writer Bruno Associates. Bruno Associates were invited to the meeting to discuss the possibility of having their firm on retainer. Contract would be for twelve months, three thousand dollars a month with a six month escape clause. If the district is not satisfied, the committee recommended the contract be put forth to the full board for a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, Mr. Passenti, facility minutes of November nineteenth.
Yes, thank you. Solutions Committee met November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, from four thirty PM to five forty-five. Board members present were James Daly, Dana Beltran, Joe Canova, and myself, Gary Passenti. Administration was Danny Robertozzi, Michael Uche, and Eric Tomasevich. First item of discussion are purified water bottle fillers. Mr. Marchionne stated there are two hundred and twenty-nine water foundations throughout the district. Several water foundations have been updated to the purified water bottle fillers. Several water foundations have been updated to the purified water bottle fillers. The district has an initiative to replace all water fountains to the purified system. The initiative will start by installing at least one in every school and more in the larger schools with district staff installing the units. Units cost approximately eleven hundred dollars each. The district will claim these purchases under the water grant and utilities care, cares funds and the maintenance budget. Number two was the referendum update revised tax impact. Miss Rucci reached out to the district's financial advisors to develop a revised tax impact on a tentative referendum. The estimated borrowing rate in February, two thousand twenty was three point one zero, and a revised estimated borrowing rate is now two point three zero. The committee raised concerns regarding if merged thirteen and HEPA filters can be or are part of the referendum project to be, to replace all HVAC throughout the district. Three, potential site for school expansion. Doctor Robert Tozzi is exploring sites in Clifton for a possible purchase or lease to aid class size and office space. If space becomes available, the district wants to be the first to be offered the opportunity over a potential charter schools. If something is brought to his attention, he will alert the committee and board. Number four, our cafe fund surplus, CHS Kitchen renovation. Mr. Rucci shared with the committee that the emergency feeding program has been and continues to be a huge success for all families throughout, throughout Clifton. The emergency feeding started March sixteenth, two thousand twenty, and will continue through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. The district receives federal reimbursements for every meal handed out and has been collecting additional revenue while having less expenses. Per law, the district cannot have more than three months of operating expenses as surplus, which is approximately one point two million dollars. And cafeteria funds can only be spent on kitchen and cafeteria upgrades. Administration proposes to renovate the high school kitchen. A budget will be developed with the architects while working along with Tom Tony and staff. Once a project is proposed, it will be shared with the committee before going to bid. Number five are capital projects. School fifteen roof. The project has been completed. There have been heavy rainstorms with no reported leaks. Roof has a twenty-five year warranty. School seventeen BMS, the project has been completed and training for the staff will commence as soon as possible. School one and school five electrical upgrades, these projects have been completed. Discussion about tentative capital projects. A two thousand twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two potential projects. Administration proposed capital project ideas for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Projects include school thirteen window replacement, Woodrow Wilson Middle School and Christopher Columbus Middle School auditorium renovation, which would include seating, painting, and flooring. The committee concurred and professional service quotes and budget estimates will be collected to be considered. And that's the end of the, our meeting. Any questions?
Any questions, anyone?
I have a quick one.
Mr. Casper?
Okay, um, now for the potential sites that we would possibly look at, is that to expand for the COVID related? Or is it, we're just looking to expand in the future?
I'm gonna let Dr. Robert Tozzi answer that.
You're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Passenti. Mr. Casper, just planning for the future, not, not due to COVID.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, um, being that we had to move things around because of technical difficulties, we're gonna go back to twelve presentations of reports from administration advisory committees and special committees. Dr. Robert Tazi, your, your group is on.
All right, we'll try this again.
Mr. Jengaro, are you ready?
We'll try it for take two. And if I'm unable to do it on my end, I'm gonna make a call to the bullpen and ask Mr. Mountain to help me out. But we're hoping that, we're hoping that this works. All right. Any luck?
Yep.
All right. Victory is ours. Thank you very much, everybody, Commissioners.
I spoke too soon. We can see your screen, Mark, but it, to me, it's, it's blank.
It's blank.
We're definitely seeing your screen.
All right, Mr. Mountain, would you mind sharing the presentation, please?
No problem.
It's amazing how, how simple that looked when you took the helm. Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioners of the Board of Education, our central administration, and of course, all of our viewers who are watching at home. As Dr. Robert Tozzi said earlier, the title of District Administrator of Climate and Security really just serves as an umbrella for a whole host of responsibilities and hats that I wear within the district. For the next portion of tonight's presentation, I will be reporting in capacity of our district's anti-bullying coordinator. In this presentation, you will find information specific to a two-year comparison of the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year versus the two thousand nineteen twenty, nineteen twenty school years for both report period two data and full year data for violence, vandalism, substance abuse, abbreviated as VVSA, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, also known as HIB, and our HIB trainings and programs. In addition to this, we'll be sharing the results of each building's school self-assessment for determining grades under the anti-bullying bill of rights. Next slide, please, Mr. Mountain. In accordance with the New Jersey school law, twice per year, the chief school administrator or designee shall present to the Board of Education a summary of violence, vandalism, substance abuse, and harassment, intimidation, and bullying for both report period one, which ranges from September first to December thirty-first, and report period two, January first until June thirtieth. The purpose of these presentations is to ensure that accurate information on VVSA and HIB incidents are submitted to the NJ DOE through a program or a platform known as the Student Safety Data System, and that this information is shared with all stakeholders as it's publicly reported to the District Board of Education. In addition to that, information specific to HIB trainings and programs must also be shared for both report periods one and two. Next slide, please, is Mr. Mountain. As previously stated on the last slide, this SSDS platform is used to capture two specific types of information for HIB and VVSA, and again, any other incident that leads to student removal from school. Next slide. What you'll see in this next slide is actually going to be an image exhibiting the information as it appears on SSDS. However, due to the small font, we recognize it is, it's very difficult to read. It will be broken down further later in this presentation. Next slide, and we'll start with violence, vandalism, and substance abuse. This is a list that includes the wide range of examples of things that fall under the category of VVSA. As you can see, the majority of these examples are things that are considered to be serious and or severe in nature. Our next four slides are going to provide all of our stakeholders with building specific data in a two-year comparison for report period two and the total year for VVSA's. As you can see, these slides are broken down by school into four categories: violence, vandalism, weapons, and substance abuse. You will see that the district totals at the end, that the bottom bold font has demonstrated a tremendous decrease. Naturally, the closing of schools in March due to COVID has contributed to the decrease, but we would gladly welcome any decrease in incidents nonetheless specific to VVSA's. Moving forward to harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and, and, and rest assured that this slide and presentation will be posted by Ms. DeRose as a PDF on our district website for everybody to more carefully read the numbers. Mr. Mountain, if you wouldn't mind going down to slide number ten, so we can move forward to harassment, intimidation, bullying. It's important for us to find on what HIB means. For, for, in order for an incident to constitute HIB, two things must exist. First is what we call distinguishable characteristic. We've provided a list of what we call a protected categories that serve as characteristics, such as race, religion, color, natural origin, mental, physical, or sensory disabilities, or any other distinguishable characteristic that can be the cause of or the root of a student being targeted, such as height, vegetarianism, and most recently in Clifton Public Schools, arachnophobia. The second thing that must exist for something to constitute HIB is what we call and consider a substantial disruption. Examples of substantial disruptions are as follows: students missing school, a steady decline in student academic performance, changes in students' behaviors, if students become withdrawn, or anxious, or even aggressive. These are just examples of both our characteristics and disruptions. But absent of both of these, the incident that was reported would only be a violation of the student code of conduct versus being confirmed HIB. Next slide, please. What we're gonna be doing for our next four slides, once again, is we're gonna be providing our stakeholders with building specific data. And again, that two-year comparison for report period two and the year totals for harassment, intimidation, and bullying that is broken down by school. Go ahead, Mr. Mountain, so we can show the comparison of the yearly totals. Again, once again, is broken down by confirmed and alleged HIB incidents by school. And on the next slide, what you'll see is a decrease in the amount of confirmed and alleged HIB incidents. That is partially due to the closing of schools. However, it must also be accredited to the hard work and dedication of each building administrator, each building anti-bullying specialist, who, who, specific to their deeper understanding of the anti-bullying, bullying bill of rights, and the amount of trainings and programs that each school provides to their students and staff alike. The total number of HIB incidents from the two thousand eighteen and nineteen school year was one hundred and seventy-three. This data simply shows how far we've come as a district. Next slide, Mr. Mountain. The next portion of the presentation deals with the results of each building's school self-assessment for determining grades under the anti-bullying bill of rights. At the end of each school year, building-level administration worked in collaboration with the district anti-bullying coordinator and each individual school safety, school climate, and wellness teams to complete this self-assessment. It's broken down into eight core elements, each of which is further divided into components that can be scored from a range of zero to three. For consistency purposes, a rubric is provided to each team to, to refer to during the completion of this assessment. As you can see on this slide, core elements one and two are specific to all of the trainings and programs that have been mentioned earlier in this presentation. Programs such as PBSIS and the Great Kindness Challenge are utilized throughout our district. Examples of trainings include staff meetings, presentations, student assemblies, anything that covers topics such as HIB policy, prevention, consequences, and remediation. Go to our next slide. Thank you. These next four slides will provide our stakeholders, again, with building specific data and a two-year lesson for the trainings and programs that have taken place in each of the buildings. What I hope stands out to all of our stakeholders is the increase in both trainings and programs completed throughout the district, even with the closing of schools in March. This is evidence porch, my statement from earlier, recognizing the hard work and efforts of administration and anti-bullying specialists and the direct correlation that exists between the increase of our trainings and programs to the decrease in the confirmed incidence of HIB and VVSA's. Go ahead, Mr. Mountain.
Mr. Jengaro, could you explain the difference between a training and a program?
Yes, once again, the, the trainings, excuse me, programs are our outside external variables, external programs such as PBSIS. Something is not necessarily originated in Clifton Public Schools. So our multi-tiered system support and PBSIS for the upper levels and pyramid down at the pre-K program are examples of those programs. Our bucket fillers, the Great Kindness Challenge are, again, some examples of those programs where outside vendors can come in and provide supports. Our trainings are in-house. That can include staff meetings where administrators share things such as HIB policy, HIB prevention, and other techniques to help limit and reduce the amount of, of HIB that exists in our district. Studies that cover those same topics, such as consequences and remediation, are also examples of some of the trainings that take place in our district.
Thank you.
Mr. Mountain, if you could go to slide number twenty, I believe. We'll start with core element number three. This deals with the education of, of staff specific to suicide and HIB prevention. In a five-year cohort, all staff are required to complete both types of trainings. Core element number four deals with how the district and individual buildings recognize the importance of character education and HIB prevention by embedding it into our curriculum. Every first week of October, our district celebrates the Week of Respect, where each building conducts a series of trainings, programs, and events that do focus on character education. Next slide, please. Core element number five is specific to HIB personnel and the training and the purpose of each role. Each school is required to have an anti-bullying specialist who is responsible for facilitating the school safety, school climate, and school wellness teams. This team works to identify patterns of HIB within the school building and helps develop interventions to help remedy issues and concerns. Core element number six requires each school district to provide students, families, and stakeholders an anonymous platform to report incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Clifton satisfies this requirement through our See Something, Say Something portal that is located directly on the district website. We encourage all of our stakeholders, our families, our students who wish to report anything anonymously, subject to HIB, violence and vandalism, or even climate, please utilize this portal. Next slide, please, Mr. Mountain. And the last two core elements, number seven and eight, deal specifically to the manner in which HIBs are committed to parents and guardians, as well as the requirements for posting results on HIB grades and incidents on the district webpage. Our next two slides will show the results of each building's school self-assessment for determining grades under the anti-bullying bill of rights. Please keep in mind that the maximum score a building can receive is seventy-eight. You'll also see how, based on the individual scores within the buildings, that our overall district score has increased two full points from a seventy-four to a seventy-six. However, we use in education, it is imperative that we use data to drive instruction. And we recognize that there's, there are always areas of improvement. Go to our next slide, please, Mr. Mountain. What we have noticed that areas that are in need of improvement, all of our full and part-time staff and volunteers that do have significant contact with students must be trained on HIB reporting procedures. We are pleased to announce that the district has been proactive in this training for various, for all of our various groups. This year, we're able to incorporate substitute trainings, trainings for our transportation department, and starting as early as next month, training for our custodial and maintenance teams. We definitely need to provide continued professional development in all areas of the HIB process, as there's ever-changing members of our team and our family of the One Clifton Movement. We have new staff members, even new members of our administrative team. And above all, we need to continue to build upon the district-wide implementation of the PBSIS and pyramid models. By this time next year, we anticipate all of our schools completing their initial trainings through the Bog Center at Rutgers University, and will all have at least have that, that universal foundation implemented for a multi-tiered system of support. At this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to any of our commissioners, should they have any questions about this most recent presentation. And Mr. Mountain, thank you very much for saving the day here.
Thank you, Mr. Jengaro. Thank you, Mr. Mountain, for the assist. Does anyone have any questions?
Perfect. Once again, this, this information will be posted on our district webpage within the next few days.
Thank you, Mr. Jengaro.
Okay, seeing no questions, we're gonna go to public recognition, number fourteen. Mr. Mountain, if you could start doing what you need to do on your end while I read the statement. This portion of the meeting is open to the citizens of Clifton for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertaining to and or directly related to the operation of the Clifton Public School District. Residents are requested to sign the, to state their names and their addresses for the purpose and to state the subject matter. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Issues raised by the members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board, of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific rights, legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comment made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in the light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Do we have anybody, Mr. Mountain?
Yes, the first three are Donna, and then Dustin, and then Michael.
Okay, so first, let's, do we have any students in that group?
None that I recognize. Yeah.
So you went, you said Donna, Dustin, and Michael, is that the order?
Yes.
Okay, so Donna, if you would state your name and your address and your concern. You have five minutes.
Hi, yes, I'm sorry. Hi, good evening. My name is Donna. I live at 15 Marhart. My daughter is actually a student at School 12. I just wanted to, I guess, like praise the committee, Dr. Robert Tosi, because. This is not easy for anybody and Dr. Robert Tosi should not feel any kind of way with his decisions. Because either way, no one was going to be okay. I've been in a position where I was able to keep my daughter home. Her dad works. And she hasn't really had any issues other than wanting to be with her classmates. I think my main concern is there's a couple of kids in her class that are. They're bilingual and to me, they're struggling, you know, and because they're struggling. It makes it difficult for the other kids in the classroom. To have the attention of the teacher if the teacher has to constantly talk to these other students. And that's one thing I wish the committee would address. Because it's not fair if these kids can't really comprehend what's going on in the classroom and then they have nobody in the home that's been comprehending. And help them. So for them, I think it's a little bit like. As if it's first or second grade going back to school and they really need that interaction. And like I said, my daughter, she's, she's thriving, she's having issues, but. I'm able to help her, her dad's able to help her and my only other concern is. I'm hoping there's an, I guess, resolution. She's going to sixth grade and she hasn't been in school all year. And to go to another building with a different atmosphere, it's going to be really hard. So I'm, I'm, I'm just, we're hoping and praying that. We get vaccine or just everything gets better. Because these kids are really, they're suffering Christmas, Thanksgiving, not being with friends and family and. And the teachers too, they're, they're amazing for me. Cause I don't know how they do it, but. You know, it's, it's thank God she has a good teacher and she's new to the school. So I'm, I know a lot of the teachers in the school. So for me, it's, it's amazing to see somebody that's new to the school that the kids are really taking to and. They, they love her, you know, so I mean, I just want to. Take my hat off to Mr. Robert Tosi, the committee. School 12 has been amazing to my daughter. And a lot of the teachers know her and. And I, I saw a teacher on here, Mr. Talino. He knows my daughter from when she was in summer kindergarten. And. You know, so thanks again. Hopefully we'll see your faces come September. I hope and pray. Thank you for your time and have a good night.
Thank you. Dustin, you can unmute yourself.
Hey guys, before I say, well, I got to say, I want to agree with her. You know, I respect all you guys for what you do, even if I don't agree with what's happening or agree with a lot. It's, I still respect you guys show up every, every day and do all this, like that whole report, everything you guys do, a ton of things. I really hope you can understand where I'm coming from. It's strictly one thing and that's the love of my children. That's it. It's as simple as that. So if I don't agree with you and I say some things, you don't agree with me, please still respect me like I respect you guys. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm going to start with the one fact that stuck out stronger to me than any other. According to the CDC, children between the ages of five and 17, this is the range of ages this study is based upon. Due to COVID-19, 0.01% perished. Due to the regular flu, you guys all know the one that's been present since 1918 and did not have a vaccine till 1945. 1.2% in 2019 of children perished. If my math is correct, with those percentages, the regular flu is 12,000% more deadly than COVID. Yet we are slamming the door shut on 100% of their mental wellbeing. According to Karen Wagner, former president of the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry. Based on a study of 3,613 children, 22.3% had scores of clear indicative clinical depressive symptoms. Due directly to the COVID crisis. Due to the short time period, I'm going to read a few excerpts from that without a backstory about social isolation. This review included 63 studies with a total of 51,576 participants. Social isolation and loneliness increased risk of serious depression for up to nine years later. Duration rather than the intensity of the loneliness was more strongly associated with severe mental symptoms. Early intervention may prevent long-term mental health consequences directly due to COVID-19. It is also noteworthy to mention that all these studies came out in October of this year, 2020. Please sleep comfortably on that information. As I look at all of you, I am very upset knowing that by your actions of keeping school closed. You are all clearly condoning these blatant atrocities upon our most valuable assets, our children. This is no doubt become a war with our children as casualties. I simply cannot stay quiet knowing this. Who are we really concerned about here? From your actions, it's not the children. Is it the teachers, the unions? This seems like a big joke and our children's the punchline. Although it is Mental Health Week, yes, Mental Health Week. I got an email earlier from, for, for a phone number and an email. You know, that's great. Our kids can, can call, you know, a complete stranger or email somebody you don't know. It's got to be more than that. They need social interaction. It's simple. With social interaction, they won't need those things. They need schools to be open. They need common sense. What are your actions teaching our kids? It's literally to hide in a hole from fear. The kids deserve an opportunity to go to physical school. If you are physically compromised in any way, please stay home and have those physically compromised teachers stay home as well. And they can teach those students, but those students who want to go back, let them. I'm sure there's teachers who want to go back too. Let them thrive. Let's not let them rot inside their worried little depressed minds. You guys have the power to engage our children and to let them grow and thrive and be confident with themselves. But you also have the power to destroy their mental happiness, destroy their mental advancement. The choice is yours, not mine. Please make the right choice. Please. Thank you for your time.
Dustin, Michael, unmute yourself, please.
Hi, good evening. I'm Michael Chalino from School 12. That wasn't planned with the other pair. I just wanted to say thank you to the board members and thank you to the administration. We're so happy we got our Chromebooks. So, you know, I know these are tense times and I just wanted to show you like. One of the main things Clifton has made sure is that we're making relationships with our students. So. I always like to celebrate. So look at this little cat. I know you can see one of my students made that for me. So. That's one thing where really they know I love cats. So. That's a big thing and I just want to say thank you. We're so excited. Hi, Dr. Robert Tosi, see you came in there. It was to see their faces when the Chromebooks came. It was so exciting. So I was like, woo-hoo. And that's all I wanted to say. And School 12, you know. Yeah, like it's a time of a lot of tough decisions, rumors, people saying this, but I just want to tell you. I, I, you know, from my mouth that I thank you and I'm excited Clifton won and I really appreciate. I know I'm an outspoken person, but you've always respected me and I really appreciate that. And that's it. So thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Mountain, the lineup, please.
Next up, we have Erica and then Lori Lalama and then Andrea Ork.
Okay, Erica, you're on. You'll state your name, please. Are you a student? Erica, are you there?
Erica was in the waiting room quite some time, so maybe she's not here.
Okay, could you just mute her out? So I'm going to call on Ms. Lalama.
Sure.
Go ahead, Ms. Lalama, you're on.
All right, thank you. Good evening to all. I hope everyone had a healthy and safe Thanksgiving. There are only a few comments I would like to make tonight. Unfortunately, I'm not Barbara Eden from My Dream of Jeannie or Elizabeth Montgomery from Bewitched. Because I would blink my eyes and twitch my nose to make COVID go away. But it isn't going to happen. The numbers are increasing rapidly and we all know why. I continue to thank Dr. Robert Tosi, his executive team, the Board of Ed, to keep the buildings closed to protect the lives of the students. Their families, the staff and their families. The, the families live in multi-generational households, so it's so easy to pass that virus. And I really commend the group for making that decision. I'm so proud of the staff in this district for their hard work they are doing. They are engaging their students. They're designing great activity. They're learning new platforms. They're learning new applications to make their subject fun and exciting for all. They have gone above and beyond what they are doing and I commend them. Praise and thankfulness always goes a long way and I appreciate everything that they have done. Our Pride and Fast events are phenomenal and Andrea will talk more specifically about them. But the NJEA has given the CEA over four years $160,000 to spend in the district. So that goes to the events for our kids, including their families and the community. And we're going to be having one through the GSA and the high school. And Cedar Grove will be part of this and that'll be a pride event. I will end this with a quote from The Truth is Light. When the organization expects a frown, be sure to smile. When the organization is troubled and insecure, be sure to provide poise and composure. When the organization needs you the most, lead by example. This was by Dr. Crinner Cash and I hope everybody has a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ork, Andrea Ork.
Hi, good evening, everyone. How are you? That's okay. As you know, I am the Pride and Fast Chair for the Clifton Education Association. Once again, December's a busy month and we are inviting our families to a plethora of events, actually, starting tomorrow. We're going to have Storytime with Sano where the first 500 families are going to get cookies and milk. And then they will virtually have a story time with the big man, Santa. It will be reading them a story while they have their cookies and milk. And then on December 8th, School 17th is having their paint night, their first winter paint night. December 9th, we are inviting all the SEALA families for our winter fitness night. The first 200 guests will get a free water bottle and winter mittens and they'll be working out. On December 10th, Lori mentioned that we are pairing up with the Clifton GSA and the Cedar Grove GSA is doing a webinar for everyone in the community. For supporting the LGBTQ plus youth in the classroom. I'll be sending all these links to the commissioners and the Board of Ed if you'd like to join us. Because these are awesome events that NJEA gave us the funds for and we're trying everything we can to make sure we are enjoying. What we have right at this time, considering everything is virtual for our students. And then also December 17th, School 14 will be having their winter wonderland story time. So like I said, we're trying our best as the teachers and the members of the Clifton Education Association, trying to get social events for our students, for our families. And everyone in Clifton to make sure that we are interacting the best we can, especially in a virtual format. And usually we do have a day that they could pick up supplies. And at home that night, they go on a Zoom link and they're having fun. They're interacting. They're saying hello to one another. The families are involved, the kids are involved and it's just an all-around fun, especially in this time of year. So once again, I will send an email out to all of you tonight with our link for tomorrow and all the other events for December. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Max Rubin, you're next. Unmute yourself, just state your first name.
Thank you, Mrs. Bassford. Hello, it's Max Rubin, Senior Representative to the Board of Education. I have a few things to talk about this meeting. The first is the Clifton Student Union in collaboration with the media specialists. And a special thank you to Vice Principal, Mr. Walker helped us out a lot with this initiative, is the Digital Resources Website. This was initiative we had planned for a couple of months now and it's finally paid off. So basically what happened is that the student union had an idea to have an exam book drive where people would go. Drop off their old test prep books for SAT, ACT, AP exams and they can drop off those books at the high school. That was from October 21st to November 20th. So the exam book drive is now finished. And we collected over 45 test prep books and we also have over 45 test prep ebooks available. So you can either pick them up at the school physically or you can get the ebook online. And we have a website now, the Digital Resource Website. It's going to be put on the Clifton High School website. But the Google site was actually sending an email to students in grades nine to 12. And on the site, you can find instructions on how to pick out a hard copybook and an ebook if you want a test prep book. Also, there's a resource for the Clifton Public Library and the student union did something really special. As the president, I took the lead in this initiative of creating a list of resources. We have six test prep websites that all have free resources that you can access. And eight different educational YouTube channels and I made, I made sure to get channels. Covering each different subject. So we have one for like history, one for science, one for math. And we have a couple of channels like Crash Course and Khan Academy that cover basically every subject. So we have a wide variety, a wide variety of different sites. We have eight different YouTube channels and six different. Test prep websites with free materials that you can access on that digital resource site. And it was emailed to all the students. So that's a really good, a really good initiative we finished. The next thing I wanted to talk about is the Linkit Quarterly System. For the first marking period, if you guys don't know, we use this website called Linkit to take our quarterlies. I only took one quarterly and it was for English and it worked fine, but other students didn't really think it worked all, all too well. I got several complaints for some students. Some people complained that it was really hard to use for certain exams such as math exams or you have to show your work and. And these students said they had to go to a whole different tab just to answer the question, which made it really inconvenient. A lot of students called the website choppy and dated. And people wish they were given a tutorial beforehand so that they can get used to how the website worked before they just went into taking quarterly. I know you guys, you guys did your best trying to organize the quarterlies with such a limited time. I just hope for next marking period. We could be a little more prepared. Students could take a practice test or at least learn how the website is navigated. Or if it's just, if it's just a pain to use, maybe consider switching to a different website that isn't Linkit because it does seem a little dated. And a lot of students were having issues with it. The next thing I wanted to mention was the IM Mastery Academy scam. I mentioned this at the last Board of Ed meeting. And my colleague Barry, Barry Mahmood, I think, just mentioned this to Mr. Doctor and Mr. Robert Tosi in a media, a meeting, the superintendent ambassador meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong. This is a pyramid scam. That's a pyramid scheme that's been going on for a few months now. And it's affecting a lot of students in our high school. One of my friends was just scammed, I think $240 because he watched a video on their website. And he didn't even think he was committing to anything. So it's a really big problem. It's basically this. These scammers that attract kids with the promise of making like millions of dollars if they start trading Forex. And it's really, it's really destructive. I mean, I already told you, my friend was out $240 because of this. And it's affecting several other students in the high school and I wouldn't be surprised if it's affecting kids in the middle school too. Especially to lower income families, it can be really destructive and I hope that the staff maybe sends out a warning. And I hope that the staff maybe sends out a warning or an email to the students in both the middle and high schools, warning them about this scam. It's called IM Mastery Academy, and it's a really big issue. Other than that, you know, a lot of the extracurricular programs in the high school are running really well. The marching band, unfortunately, I decided not to go back, but many of my friends are still in marching band, and they're going to do a virtual holiday show tomorrow. So that should be really exciting. You can check that out. It's gonna be posted to YouTube. And they always do a great job. It's gonna be a really good show. And also, the CHS Cast 3 program is continuing to do a great job with the morning show. I'm a part of that program, but many of my colleagues are doing a great job putting together interesting segments and also giving morning announcements, spreading the word out about important events that are happening in the school. And it's been running really smoothly, and it's getting better and better every day. Most of the clubs in our school are still running and still have good attendance. And, you know, besides the few issues I mentioned during this meeting, everything seems to be on the upside. I mean, generally speaking, like for school and programs and everything, it's going well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Max. Max, I have a question. About Linkit and the IMX. Could you send that information to Dr. Robert Tozzi? Because we have a technology meeting next week. Maybe we can discuss it and come up with some creative ideas. Okay?
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Bassford.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Mark Brunziak. You're up.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Mark Brunziak, 20 Holly Street. Thank you, Dr. Robert Tozzi. Thank you, Board of Ed, for allowing me to speak tonight. And thank you, everybody, for your presentations regarding the committees. And Mr. Gangaro, about the statistics associated with the bullying and the crime and stuff like that happening over here. The one thing I didn't hear tonight was any potential opening for the Clifton School District, as New York City, less than 15 miles away from the city of Clifton, is opening up this coming December 7th, posted by NBC News on November 29th, in-person learning, December 10th, for hybrid. Middle and high school students will remain all virtual for now, the mayor said. Kids in kids' grades K through 5 and pre-K programs, again, which we have mentioned before are the most at-risk youth, whose parents have already signed up for hybrid learning, will be allowed back to the classroom because there is less of a spread of COVID among younger children, while the demands of all virtual learning on their families are the greatest. Special ed students will be allowed to return to hybrid student, hybrid in-person schooling, December 10th. And so it's kind of upsetting. And I hear all the people that support and they praise for the tough decisions that are made, but that there is no mention of that yet. It's so important, especially since the beginning of the year. You have wonderful people over here at the Board of Ed, like Ms. Yenina, who spent months prepping to have in-person schooling for some of the kids, hybrid schooling. And it's just very frustrating for many of the parents. And again, you know, so just a direction. I'm not demanding. I'm asking just to try to give parents an opportunity, a choice, like you announced. Some of the kids, when they first opened up in October, they were there for maybe four days, tops. And that was it. They haven't been able to go back into the school. Washington Post, yesterday. "It's still difficult for me to understand why schools are closed in the United States." Says Otto Health, a specialist in pediatric infectious diseases at the Finnish Institute for Health and Welfare, who has studied coronavirus transmission in schools. Schools, quote, "are not driving the epidemic." France, which has spiked worse than Spain last month, also saw relatively low numbers in schools. The week of France's peak last month, 0.1% of students and 0.2% of school personnel tested positive for coronavirus. Across the country, 142 of 528,000 classrooms quarantined, about 0.3%, while 21 of 61,500 schools went into fuller quarantine, according to data from the Education Ministry over there in Europe, across the pond. And all the statistics that have been provided over the past board meetings referenced all the time, the CDC, the CDC guidance says this. And you know what the CDC also said to all the viewers, to all the listeners here? They also said that voters had the right to vote, regardless of whether they are sick in quarantine. Voters who are sick or in quarantine have a right to vote. That's what they said. If you're still infected. Yet here we are, December 3rd, 2020, we're still not discussing even something down the tube. You know, even something down the tunnel or down the tube. Is there any kind of vision where we see there's potential for opening up any of these schools? For the parents that are desperate to get their kids that are devastated that they still can't get in there? Governor Murphy, and I want to thank the teachers that I've had in the Clifton School District. They were over 20 years ago, wonderful teachers, Mrs. Delinsky, Ms. Peters, Ms. Carpinelli. These were wonderful teachers over 20 years ago. I don't know if they're still with the district. They taught me critical thinking skills that I have until to this day, and I'm so thankful for them. And I know it's not the same virtually when I've seen my nephews, you know, my relatives, you know, virtually attending class. Now, Governor Murphy just announced this past Monday, November 30th, that all indoor youth and adult sports are being placed on a full pause effective 6:00 AM, December 5th through January 6th.
That's five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Brunziak.
Here's what I'm asking. I'm just asking the Board to please consider, to please consider, get a date or destination to try to get the kids a choice to get in school. Thank you, and God bless America. Have a good night, everybody.
There's a phone caller, phone cell number ending in 1085. Are you there? Please state your name and address.
Hello?
Are you a student?
No, I'm a parent. My son is a student. My name is Carrie Gerlach.
Thank you. And your address, please?
90 East 9th Street.
You have five minutes.
Okay. So my son is a seven-year-old boy in school number 11, diagnosed with both autism, which is like Asperger's, and ADHD. And he got his first report card, you know, like a week ago. And in second grade, they don't give you A, B, C, D. They give you different letters that mean different things. And my son's report card is a line of X, which is like shows serious concern in that area. My son has been in school since three years old due to autism. And every report card, every progress report I have ever gotten, he gets like straight A's when he has just a little bit of guidance, when he's placed in a school situation. Right now, my son is not learning hardly anything. We are playing a game of trying to keep him focused. I've gotten to the point where I'm just like, just sit in front of the camera. I hope if it's playing in my house, he's learning something. The teachers say apologies, not being able to personally work with him because there's just too many students. You know, I think about social distancing with these kids being a problem, yet we're still gonna put 300 apartments in Clifton when we can't figure out the problems with social distancing we already have. But what I'm saying is, my son, his IEP is not being met, not even a little bit. It's not even being met a little bit. Occupational therapy in person helps him. Occupational therapy virtually sends him into a fit. And we've had to stop doing the occupational therapy because it's made everything so much worse when it's done virtually. So I'm thinking that, you know, these kids with IEPs and these kids with special needs, and especially my son, and the only one I can speak for is my son, is absolutely 100%, not even getting 1% of his IEP fulfilled. His entire education is going down the drain. He's isolated in his own autistic brain, so his behaviors are going backwards. And throughout all this, we regularly see a neurologist, a sleep study specialist. He has developmental pediatrician on Friday. And every single one of them are saying that nothing will ever be right with these autistic children until they are back in school, on a schedule, away from where they live and have no boundaries. If I reach for a pencil, he jumps to the left, there's toys. He jumps to the right, there's toys. He turns around, there's his refrigerator. My special needs son needs school worse than anything. And I honestly feel that we've just been strong-won with lives. I feel like the very first time you guys announced you were opening school on October 12th, the entire plan was just to shut up the parents for two weeks. Because the way they let those kids out of school that Friday, they were running out one pencil left in the desk. When I left that Friday, the 30th, I knew they weren't going back. I didn't get the email till Wednesday, but all those teachers knew. Everybody knew. These kids, what a disservice this virtual learning is to at least 50% of these kids. And it seems like nobody even cares. It seems like the biggest thing that anybody does is learn how to make an excuse. And it seems the second that you mention COVID, nobody has the right to challenge it. You know what? There's a 99.95% survival rate. And if we have old, extremely unhealthy teachers, just give them a retirement package, make it lovely, and bring in the young ones. We have an entire generation of kids that are gonna be in charge of our old age care, our social security, and we are completely stripping them of a proper education. And just like Mark Brunziak said, was there with many, many teachers in the school system at school 11, Jeannie Rootsith, you know, Mrs. Blake. There was a ton of great teachers that didn't just teach you. They just didn't teach you how to do math. They taught you about life. And they did it in a way that it came to a child by a person they respect that's not a parent. Because the first person my son wants to disobey is me. And the first person he'll listen to is his teacher. Now, when we're on virtual learning, today I caught him shutting his camera off. I tell him to open his math book. I'm not doing that. We are absolutely getting nowhere, and his autism is going backwards. And I've said this before in my phone calls, even his doctors are telling me the only thing that is gonna help, not only my son, but all the special kids they are seeing in this time, is going to be the school system. It's where they learn how to sit like other kids. It's where they learn how to interact with other kids. It's where other kids put boundaries on them. It's where they learn how to line up, and they learn how to walk to gym class, and they learn how to wait for lunch. All these things, our children argue with us when we try to do this, when they just simply respect their teachers. My son would never say to his teacher, "I'm not opening my math book," but he'll say it to me. And so in the meanwhile, from 9 to 1 every day, I'm a single mother who supports my son and my bills without any welfare help. I have to cut my work hours, extend them to later at night, go out of my way for childcare for my son to get absolutely zero education. Zero education. The teachers are working. Twice as hard.
Ma'am, your five minutes is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, anyone else in the waiting room?
Nope, that's it.
Motion close? Mr. Passanti, motion to close?
Second.
Second, Mr. Casper. Okay. We're gonna move on to education and administration. Can I have a motion for EA 12320 to 12326? But I want to pull number one, and I want Mr. Daley to read that resolution. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
First, from Mr. Casper, second. Mr. Abadraho. Mr. Daley, could you read 12320, number one?
Just want to unmute my cell. Okay. Thank you. Okay. This is EA1, "Resolved that the Board of Education recognizes Gary Passanti and expresses gratitude for the dedication and service to the community and students of Clifton, serving as board member for 10 years, including service as president and vice president of the Board, Community Relations, Facilities, Finance, Healthcare, Legal, Municipal Alliance, Negotiations, and Residency Committee."
I would like everybody to vote on this. Could we have a roll call, a separate roll call, please, Mr. Uzi?
Of course. Mr. Abadraho?
Yes.
Ms. Beltran?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes, and Gary, all the best to you in the future.
Mr. Casper?
Yes, of course.
Mr. Passanti? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Gary.
Mr. Uzi, don't you have something?
Yes, I was just gonna say, Ms. Bassford, we are gonna be awarding Mr. Passanti this plaque. I'll get it to him as soon as possible.
Can you read it, please?
Sure. It almost mirrors the resolution, but it's presented to Gary Passanti. "The Clifton School District recognizes Gary Passanti and expresses its gratitude for his dedication and service to the community and students of Clifton, serving as a board member for 10 years, including service as a president and vice president of the Board, as well as service on the Community Relations, Facilities, Finance, Healthcare, Legal, Municipal Alliance, Negotiations, and Residency Committees. Clifton Board of Education, December 2020."
Congratulations, Gary.
Congratulations, Gary. And good luck. I know you got a lot of fishing to do. Okay, so let's do EA 12320, number two to number seven. Is there any discussion on those items? No discussion? Can we have roll call, please, on the rest of those items, Mr. Uzi?
Mr. Abadraho?
Yes.
Ms. Beltran?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Passanti?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes. Okay, C Personnel, P 1220, number one through 14. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Abadraho, who is second?
I was.
Mr. Smith. Any discussion, concerns, comments? Roll call, Mr. Uzi?
Mr. Abadraho? Ms. Beltran?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Casper? Mr. Passanti?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Ms. Bassford?
Yes. Okay. D Finance, F 12320, number one through eight. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
That's Mr. Smith's second?
Second.
Mr. Passanti? Any discussion?
I think we have some discussion.
Okay, Dana, go ahead. You're on.
I'm not sure the opinion of other board members, but F1, I'm not sure if we want to pull this to executive to discuss it, or if we'd like to discuss it in public. But anyone else has an opinion on that?
What is the pleasure of the board? Would you like to discuss it now, or do you want to bring it to executive session?
I mean, it's my opinion that I think if you are going to discuss that, that should be an executive.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so but then we're gonna have to amend the motion. It was Gary, and then it was Jim Smith and Gary, right? Right?
Mr. Smith and Mr. Passanti, correct.
Well, which one do you want to pull, Dana?
I was asking to pull D1.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
All right, I'll amend.
You'll amend. You'll amend your motion, and Gary, you second the motion to pull D1 in second?
I'll amend it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Uzi, we're gonna be pulling D number one. Can I have a roll call on, you know what? I have something to say. I have to talk about D2. I can't make a motion to pull this one, but I would really like to. But I'm not in favor of this. Everybody on this board is, the nine of us that have, we come to this board from a collective. We all have different backgrounds. We all have different, our fingers on different pulses. The one pulse that I have is 1,875 pulses that I feel every day. And they're our special needs students. And unfortunately, the moms and dads of that group, and the group that I represent, and the group that I... the moms and dads of that group and the group that I represent and the group that I, 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 circle in are afraid to speak. I got a lot of phone calls after the, um, agenda went live and they told me, no way. And, um, I'm, I told them that I am only one vote and I am only one voice. So I have 1,875 students that I have to worry about every day, and I think this is the wrong choice. So I will be voting no on that, that, that item as well. Okay, that's all I have to say. Anybody else have any other discussion? Okay, roll call, Mr. Uzi on, uh, D2 through?
Seven.
Um, eight, uh, eight.
Mr. Abadrabo.
Yes.
Ms. Beltran.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes, I've seen on D2.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Mr. Casper.
You're muted.
I'm sorry, you're muted, Mr. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Pascanti.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Bassford.
I am going to vote yes and everything. I'm gonna vote yes on everything, but D2, I am going to vote no because there's eight, 1,875 families that are counting on us to do the right thing. So I'm voting no on that one. Thank you. All right. Uh, board member comments. Who went last time? Gary? No, Gary, you're going last. You're going to go last. All right. I don't have the list in front of me, but I'm going to try my best to do this. Um, let's see, um, Mr. Abadrabo.
All right. First of all, I get to, I'll be the first one to congratulate Gary. Um, Gary, good luck on your fishing company. You've done a lot. You have, you and I have not always seen eye to eye on stuff, but you know what? Listen, uh, congrats. Um, you've served the city well. You can turn, you continue to do it in your, uh, law enforcement, uh, job during the day and your board of ed at night. Uh, I don't think anybody else can, can doubt you for saying that you cared about Clifton. Um, I want to also, um, give my condolences to the Padilla family. Uh, we lost a, uh, board of ed colleague to a heart attack. Um, Octavio Padilla from Newark. Uh, Dave was a great guy. Dave was a great guy who will serve Senator, Senator L.A. Poe. Uh, my condolences to his family. Um, uh, other than that, I really don't have anything else besides that, you know, I, I, I know that people are saying there are mental breakdowns and issues within the younger grades. I cannot speak, um, for the special ed population, uh, but I can speak for my daughter, who again, I always use her as an example. She's gotten better in a sense, but she's always, I can't compare it to everybody else. I, I'm hoping by, by beginning the school year or beginning the 2021 uh, calendar year, we're back in. I know there are a lot of teachers who want to go back in. Um, I hear teachers every day when I see in the shop, I'm saying, yeah, I, I hope my kids go back in. But again, I was welcome to the day I started to the, to the board of ed meetings to speak and to let us know how they feel, but they're not coming. So I, I, I hope things are changing for the sake of society, for the sake of our children, for the sake of our population in our city. Um, other than that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abadrabo. Uh, Ms. Beltran?
Thank you, uh, Judy. Thank you to Gary. I will miss you. Um, but I look forward to joining a fishing voyage next year. I'll start stocking up on the dran and me now. Um, I, I thank you for all the callers. Um, I hear you and I wish I could help you more. Uh, I hope with the vaccine, it would open up some paths for us to get our kids back into physical school permanently. The in and out, the out, the, uh, thinking about going in, it's just becoming a, a torture on the kids as well as the parents and the teachers as well. I hope everyone enjoys their holidays with their families and I will see you in 2021, God willing. Um, have a great night.
Uh, Mr. Canova?
Hey, good evening. So first and foremost, um, I want to say thank you to Mr. Pascanti. 10 years of service is a very long time. Uh, there's been some ups and downs in this board, uh, but, you know, it paid off. Uh, and I want to thank you for your service to our kids and our town, our district, um, you know, always doing the right thing, always, always being on the, on the side of, of the good guys, uh, and, and the good ideas, uh, and moving our district forward. So much appreciated. Um, and best to you and, and all your endeavors. I do want to thank all the speakers that came out tonight. Um, thank you to Mr. Jengaro for, for your comprehensive report. Always, always good to see that. Um, the, some of the stats that have been coming out, like, uh, you know, you, you watch on the news, you see CDC, you see Fauci, they talk about, you know, the new, the new studies that they see and the trends in schools, and they're saying that they're, in schools, the spread is not, is not really an issue or, or that they see a very minimal issue there. Um, but the concern that I have heard brought up a couple of times already by our superintendent is the rule of two. Um, and that's really what I think gets us is that Clifton is a large district and all of our schools have many students in it. So if we bring students back in, for, for an example of comparison, you have Avalon in Cape May County. They have a five to eight grade school that has 43 students in it. So it's four levels with 43 students. I'm assuming 10 per class. In that class, if two students have COVID, that, that school, that, that class would have to, uh, quarantine. If two students in different classes had COVID, an entire school would have to quarantine. Now, 43 students, so you're talking about 4% of the population. In Clifton, we have almost 4,000 students in the CHS. So you're talking about a point 05% population. It needs to be positive for us to close the school. So the problem here is really in the legislation. It's the yo-yo effect. It's the in and out. It's the guidance from the state. To me, that's not clear enough. I, I think we should, we should push back on that if we want to talk about opening our schools and push back to a percentage and not a, a just an arbitrary, arbitrary number of two. Um, I think that's the concern, or at least in my mind, that's the concern. Because in this one school, you know, that you're having 80% higher rate allowed than us to be out. So, um, I would actually push that back to, to our legislative committee. Maybe it's some, even something we, we hold as a resolution. I don't know. But, um, I know we should have further discussions on that. The other thing that was in our last meeting notes from education was that we were looking at students with IEPs and seeing if there was, uh, other ways of, of educating. Um, I'm not sure we received an update on that. I know we do have another subcommittee meeting next week, so I'm hoping to hear some more information on that. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Canova. Mr. Daly?
Thank you, Ms. Bassford. Um, first of all, I want to pass on condolences to the Lees family. Um, I guess both of you realize that Mr. Lees, former superintendent here at school and kind of a fixture in town that passed recently, believe he was 84, so I like to wish condolences. And, um, I'd ask our secretary to prepare a resolution of condolences on behalf of the board uh, for ratification on our next meeting. Um, I'd like to thank Mr. Jengaro for his presentation. Um, I wish the, um, if there was an opportunity, I have not missed met, uh, Mr. Awad yet, but, uh, I would like to do so and, uh, so I can properly walk, welcome him at his swearing in. So if there's any way we, we can do that, um, uh, even if it's virtually or where I could contact him, I'd like to, I'd like to do that and wish him well and, uh, wish a warm welcome to him as he joins us in January. And Gary, um, wow, it goes fast. Um, a lot of work, um, I think over our collective tenures. Uh, certainly, uh, we've moved the district forward significantly. Um, a key to that is, I think, um, we've done great budgeting and especially the cherry on top of the, of the cake here is, uh, bringing Dr. Robitose in to run our district and, uh, that's, that's good. That's a real move forward here. So it's something that, uh, I'm very proud. I think we're all very proud of seeing him onboard and giving us, uh, even further an enthusiastic direction, which I think we're going and, uh, we can only, we can only do better. So, uh, I'm very optimistic about our future and the future of the Clifton district going forward. And, um, also, uh, if I, Dr. Robitose, could you have the proper people, um, reach out to, um, Ms. Kirilak? Uh, she's a, had the parent at School 11 and see if there's anything we can do about that. I mean, I'm just, I'm sure she, she's not the only one. We've had discussions about, uh, special ed, um, students and how challenged they are, and especially those with autism. So, um, between now and then, I, if, if you could, you and the staff could kind of look at, maybe we could do something a little differently, um, in terms of addressing these. I know it's a challenge, it's a challenge under normal circumstances, even a greater challenge now. Um, and, um, and I, Joe, Joe talked about it, but, uh, you know, we wish I could, I wish we could get all our students back in school because that's where we belong. But unfortunately, there are circumstances beyond our control and events, historical events going on. So, uh, I hope this passed sooner than later. I know we're, the vaccine is, um, uh, about to make its debut, but that's going to take some time. So, um, and, uh, I don't, outside of the first responders and those getting the vaccine first and, and, uh, health officials, uh, health, healthcare workers, um, it's going to be a while. If you look at the tea leaves, the way it's, it's, nobody said, said anything on TV, but, uh, it's going to be a little, little longer than we would like to, before we could give it back to some semblance of normalcy. And lastly, I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, and all the best for the new year and hopefully, well, it just has to happen that 2021 is going to be much better than 2020. So, um, uh, God bless to all you and that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. Uh, Mr. Casper?
Yes. You might laugh, but Gary, instead, uh, it's congratulations, but also happy retirement from this board. Happy retirement and enjoy it as much as you can. Uh, I'd also like to thank, uh, our retirees who are, uh, retiring. Uh, thank you for your service to our district. I'd also like to thank all the rest of our teachers who are doing a, a wonderful job. Um, trying to get through the pandemic as, uh, we all are. And I'm hoping that the numbers go down after the, after our holidays. So this way, uh, we can get back into school as quickly as possible. Mr. Jengaro, thank you again. Always a pleasure to see your reports. I'd also like to, uh, send my condolences to the Lees family. Uh, Mr. Abadrabo and I, uh, attended school under Mr. Lees for all those years. So, um, my condolences go out to the family and, um, just in case I don't get to see everyone, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, and Happy Kwanzaa. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Casper. Mr. Smith?
Uh, Mr. Casper, uh, speaking, uh, on, on, uh, Mr. Pascanti, you know, just because a board member leaves the board now doesn't mean they can't come back many years later. Um, so, Mr. Pascanti, I leave that door open for you. You could follow me on, on any time, but, um, I, uh, uh, I can't say, uh, enough about your, um, credibility, your, um, enthusiasm, your dedication to this town and to this board. Uh, um, and I know, uh, it's not just the 10 years that you served on the board. It was the, uh, years before that that you were nudging me. Um, and, uh, I hope you will continue to nudge me and nudge the rest of us and, and, uh, don't go away just because you're not going to be sitting in, uh, the Brady Bunch function right now. Um, hopefully you will still be, uh, around to give us advice and, um, and to voice your opinions, and I look forward to that. But I, I thank you for the time that you served on the board and, uh, even though my time to serve with you was rather short, um, I do appreciate your confidence in me to serve with you for that short period of time. So best of luck, Gary, uh, in all you do. Um, I just have a few, you know, uh, sad remarks to make. Um, uh, first, uh, Teresa Valeri, which is, um, our superintendent's, uh, uh, executive secretary. Um, her mother has just, uh, passed away. Um, her name was Marianna, Marianna Parada. Uh, and Marianna was, um, a very dear friend of my parents as well as myself. Um, she, uh, attended my church and, um, just a wonderful, caring, um, and very outgoing and a righteous, uh, woman, but someone who I love very dearly. And Teresa, uh, we send our condolences out to you and your family. And Dr. Robitose, if she's not, uh, watching, I hope that you will extend, uh, our condolences to her and to her family. Um, and Ms. Bassford, I just may go over a little bit, uh, just being on that same note, um, as, uh, Mr. Daly had mentioned earlier, um, a very dedicated, um, superintendent and personal friend of mine. Uh, Billy's, uh, passed away on December 1st. Um, I became, uh, a board member, uh, under Mr. Lees. And, uh, Mr. Lees, uh, from day one, actually before day one, uh, had sent me out a letter congratulating me, uh, offered his assistance, uh, for me to come in and discuss with any questions that I had of him and, um, and I surely did so. Um, and, uh, he was so well-liked in the district. Um, he, uh, truly was a man of integrity and honor and, uh, he didn't speak loudly. Um, he didn't speak a lot, um, but his character and his devotion to this city, to the kids of this city. And, um, more importantly, the staff, he was very committed to his staff and very loyal to the staff. And, um, after Mr. Lees left as superintendent here, I, uh, stayed in contact with him and we became very close, personal friends. Um, we were having, uh, lunch together just, uh, some 16 months ago. And, uh, he, uh, he truly put a mark on, um, on Clifton. And I remember, uh, specifically when he was thinking of retiring and, uh, he came to the board and he said, listen, I am thinking of retiring, uh, but I don't want to leave the board in a lurch and in a bad situation. And, um, he wanted to go out and, um, um, find a location and have a new school built for us uh, before he retired. Um, and that is the building that you will see of School 17. Um, he was, uh, so that was the type of person he was. He could have retired, uh, then, but he didn't want to leave the district in a bad situation. So, uh, he stayed on a little bit longer and made sure that the district was in good shape, that we had the referendum and the, uh, the building chosen, the location chosen. And, um, it was very nice that, uh, he had retired before the building was completed. And it was very nice of the board to invite him back, um, for the unveiling of the new School 17. Um, so, uh, I thank Mr. Lees, uh, for all those years of his dedication to Clifton. And to be honest with you, Clifton would not be in the place that we're in today without the 17 years dedication as superintendent that Mr. Lees gave. And, uh, many more years, uh, I can't do the math in my head, but the many more years he taught in, uh, in, as a teacher for a total of 43 years, uh, in our district. So, um, I, uh, concur with Mr. Daly that, uh, a resolution, uh, be adopted. Um, if not tonight, if there's a vote available to take tonight, uh, that we do it formally next meeting and, uh, send it on to his family. Um, and the last thing I'd like to just report on real quick is, um, you know, a lot of people have spoken again about the closing of schools and, and et cetera. you know, a lot of people have spoken again about the closing of schools and, and et cetera. And I don't want to start a long prolonged debate over this, but Mr. Dr. Robitazzy and the board, we do not, we're not medical experts. We're not people in the health department. So we take recommendations from people that have those higher degrees. And the recommendation to close schools not only came from the state health department, the county health department and our local city health department. And we really are obligated to take their insight and their words. And we acted upon their recommendations. And for anyone, and I have to state this before I, I end, Ms. Mrs. Bassford, but for anyone to allude to or insinuate that our teachers or any bargaining unit, any staff member, custodian and paraprofessional and bus drivers, that anyone had any influence on board members making a decision, or that any teacher should retire or let younger teachers come in is totally incorrect. We have such dedicated and devoted teachers that want to be back in the classroom. They want to be back with their kids, but they want to do it in a safe manner. So please, people, get that out of your minds. Our teachers are great teachers. They want to be with their kids. And I'm glad that some speakers had some great teachers in the past. They were great teachers and it shows you the caliber of Clifton, that we had great teachers in the past and we have great teachers in our schools today. So please don't discredit them for not coming into work. We closed the schools by the recommendation of the superintendent. Teachers didn't do that. No other bargaining unit did that. And no one should take anything against any of those people or insinuate that they, they had anything of doing for the closing of schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacenti. I'm going to go before you because it's always been a tradition that the last board member takes it out. And then Mr. Robitazzy, Dr. Robitazzy, would you like to go before Mr. Pacenti? So he could take us out of our comments? Would you like to do that? Because I'm going to speak first. Do that. Okay. So, um, thank you for all the speakers that came out tonight. I, I we, we hear you. We definitely hear you. Some suggestion, we have an education meeting next week and I will be bringing stuff to the education committee. I know there's a CPAC meeting scheduled soon. If I could get the information on that, I, I'd like to maybe join, maybe somebody from the education committee can pop on that meeting as well. It's good to always see what's going on. Bill Lee's, I, I remember my first meeting with Bill Lee's. It was quite, quite an interesting exchange. It was a couple of parents from the Home and School Association of School Five. And I couldn't write on my yellow pad fast enough. And then at one point, because he was telling us also, I just dropped the pen and just pushed the pad right across the table. I couldn't keep up with the man. He was a, he was a great, great listener and he was also he was fair. He was very fair to all the parents in Clifton and especially the, the home and school parents. He would listen to us and he would, he would take note of what we had and our issues. And he would get back to us, not the next day, maybe a couple of days later, maybe a couple of weeks later, and he would give us his input. Well, I really don't want you to do it that way, but maybe we can twist it this way and, and more fit to go a different way. He always let us have an input, which was really, really a positive thing for me as a, as a, as a home and school president. And he is going to be missed and my condolences to him, his family. And he had quite an extensive career in Clifton. So that goes to say a lot as well. I don't know if we're going to have a next meeting because I think that's going to come up under the new business to discuss the December eighteenth meeting. So for every holiday in, in December, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah. There's Boxing Day, there's all these holidays. Well, I wish you well, but mine is Merry Christmas. So Merry Christmas to everyone. I can't wait till the new year begins. I just can't wait till this year is gone and say goodbye, kick it to the curb and put it out there. So Gary, I, it's been a rough, rough, I, I, I'm going to try without getting very emotional. I wish you well. I wish you success. So you give a man a fish. And you have him feed, you, you give a man a fish and you have him feed him for today. You teach a man to fish. And you'll feed him for the rest of his life. I know you've been very successful in your fishing. I, you know, I see though in and out and what you do. Thank you for your time in Clifton. Thank you for your ten years. It's, I know it's not easy. I know it's been ups and downs, but you did a lot and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Good luck in your future and catch a big one. Dr. Robitazzy, you're on.
Thank you, Ms. Bassford. Let me first also offer my condolences to the Lee's family. Anybody who spent forty-three years in the Clifton Public Schools is certainly a Clifton legend. And perhaps even more impressive is seventeen years as superintendent. You don't see that anymore. So although I never had an opportunity to meet Mr. Lee's, I heard so many wonderful things about him. And as one of my predecessors, I certainly send my condolences to his family. Another pretty big feat is ten years on the Board of Education as a, as a non-paid volunteer. I don't know what you were thinking, Mr. Pacenti, but you really served at a time where you did a lot of great things for the board and thank you for your years of service to the Clifton Board of Education. On a, on a very personal note, thank you for your personal support of me. It means a lot to a superintendent to have board members to support them professionally and personally. And, and I really appreciate that. I think the only good thing that comes out of you leaving the board is perhaps we can work a little closer in your, in your role on the, on the Clifton Police Department. So I look forward to building that relationship and, and continuing the good relations we have with CPD. So I wish you all the best and, and again, thanks, Gary, for, for all you've done for me. And finally, if our meeting is canceled on December seventeenth, I would just like to take a moment to wish the board, the community and all of our employees a happy and healthy holiday season. We will be reevaluating the opening of schools in mid-January. Based on a number of, of factors. We will follow the science to the best of our ability and we'll get recommendations from the experts. There is no one who wants school open more than I do, but I want to make sure that it's done safely for everyone. I mean, everyone talks about students and they're our first obligation. But I also have seventeen hundred staff members and their families that I have to worry about. So having said that, happy holidays to all and thank you, Mrs. Bassford.
Thank you, Dr. Robitazzy. Gary, you take it out.
Thank you. First, I want to, the, the sad part of Mr. Lee's, my condolences to him, to his family. He was my superintendent while I went to school and I got to know him. And I don't know if that's one of the reasons why I wanted to do this, but he definitely was an inspiration to a lot of us while we're in, in this district. I have something prepared and I think I could get through it. So honestly, today was not how I expected my last meeting to be. COVID has thrown many wrenches into twenty twenty and now we only could hope for a better and more consistent twenty twenty-one. I started this journey a long time ago, April of twenty ten, and I was elected to the board. Was named vice president in twenty eleven and president from twenty twelve to January of twenty nineteen. Definitely not an easy ride by any means. Most difficult are the decisions we must take that affect every student, teacher, staff, administrator in this district. It is impossible to make every single person happy with every decision made. However, at, at the end of our day, every decision, idea or vote I made was what I felt was the best way to move this district going forward. Through the years, I've been asked, why do I do this stankless job? You don't get paid, you don't get anything for it. There are many sleepless nights that I've had. There are many people that second guess their Monday morning quarterback, our decisions. The ideas and some even attack your family that, that are in the public. They don't understand what we go through, what our family goes through. And I don't think that's kind of fair. However, I've always stated that I love to help people and work with great people of Clifton, make it Clifton and our district a better place. In the big picture, there are many more positives than there are negatives. Work with many wonderful people and unfortunately, sometimes people we don't agree. But it makes you a better person at the end of the day. I will say this, this job is not for self-recognition or to make a name for yourself. Because if you're in for that, you're not doing the position or district any good. Decisions you make here affect many people, students and their futures. During my tenure in this district, I've made many improvements and I'm very proud to say I was part of this team. A total of twenty-one million, two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars of improvements. Consisting of roofs, windows, boilers, electrical upgrades, security, CHS auditorium, science labs, CHS athletic fields, Christopher Columbus Middle School softball field and our beautiful CHS stadium. I hope this board continues to keep up with our facilities and, and our infrastructure. It only makes this district move forward. I got to take a few minutes just to thank a couple of people that, that really have helped me through the years. The first one was Ms. Karen Perkins and may her, may she rest in peace. Karen was one of the toughest people I've ever worked with. It came to spending money. We all laughed that when we asked her to open her purse, she felt like it was her own money and she wouldn't spend the district. So she is missed, but I wanted to thank her because she really taught me a lot about budgeting. Mike Ucci, Mike, thank you for your guidance after Ms. Perkins left us. You always supported me in the decisions of this board. Your job is not easy, Mike, and I don't envy you. However, you handled it with grace and dignity. The district should be very proud to have a business administrator like you. Mr. Teigen, Mark, I want to thank you for always supporting me and my opinions along with the decisions I, I've made. Over the years, we've been in numerous meetings, always coming at it and working together, no matter what side of the fence we were on. I'm glad we became colleagues, but more importantly, we became friends. Mr. Rich Tardala. I've worked very closely with Rich in my tenure as president. Not every decision he made or I made was popular. However, we had the best interest in the district in hand. We had many laughs and we've had many heated disagreements through the years, but I always remain friends at the end of the day. One thing we always did was reconcile our differences and our different views to continue our great working relationship for this district. Coach, Mr. Tony Orlando, what can I say? He's known me since I was in ninth grade as my football coach. Always respected your opinion as my coach and I continued to respect your opinion throughout life. I appreciate our friendship and your guidance throughout all our years. Mr. Daly, Jim, thank you for your support and guidance since I was elected to the board. Your knowledge and experience has helped my confidence and grow as a board member. I consider you a good friend and I know I can reach out at any time in need. Really thank you from the bottom of my heart. Ms. Arlena Gresti, so glad we became close friends. Our conversations were filled with laughs. However, some of them were made on many curse words. I can always count on you to make me smile and forget the negativity that was surrounding us. Thank you for always being there for me and my family. Dr. Robert Ozzy, I know you always say call me Dan. However, you deserve the credit of be calling Dr. Robert Ozzy. You've took the helm of this big district that has a bright and successful future. Your guidance and leadership is one that Clifton deserves. I look forward to our continued friendship and working with you in a different capacity. If you ever need anything, please do not hesitate to call. I'm always a phone call away. And to my family. Sorry. Denise Alexa Erica. Since we began this journey in twenty ten, many said we would not make another term. Well, three terms later, we leave, we're leaving our way. The journey put a lot of stress on this family, but in the end, it made us stronger and better people. It also showed you could achieve anything you put your heart into. Don't ever listen to the negative and always strive to be the better person and stay positive. My daughters Erica and Alexa are prime examples of what Clifton District has to offer. A nurse and a medical assistant, both having extremely bright futures. And I can't say how proud I am of these ladies, what they have become. There are many other people I have to thank, I would like to thank and I could go on and on. However, in the end, you know who you are and I thank you for everything. In closing, I want to thank my fellow board members from the bottom of my heart. You've always supported me through the tough times, even while I was out injured, which was a very difficult time for my family. I know you will strive to keep this district moving forward, become the best of the best. I ask you to support the superintendent's decisions because with your support, there's no limit to where this district can go. Our future is bright and everyone working together will make it a great place to learn. To all our teachers, staff and administrators, I know all my decisions were not popular over the years, but we tried to do the best for everyone. I admire your hard work and perseverance and hope everyone will continue these traits for many years to come. You are the future of this district and I hope you continue to work together to make Clifton the best it can be. Remember the word teamwork because alone we can do so little, but together we can do so much. And at last, the citizens of Clifton, I want to thank you for your support have given me throughout the years. I hope more people will get involved in their children's education. Together, you can make a difference. I ask you to continue to support our superintendent, the board's vision to make a better learning environment for our students. They are the future and each and every one of you can help support the Clifton School System's goals and our visions. I will leave you with this. Strive to be the best you could be. Leave it all on the table. And in end, let there be no excuses, no explanations and no regrets. Today is a great day to be a Mustang.
Thank you, Gary. New business? Anybody have new business?
I have a question for new business or new business.
Go ahead, Tina.
Um, so tonight, let's say if I wanted to add the alternate law firm on to, for the vote. The two-thirds amount, given that Lucy isn't here, does anyone know the math on that for how many votes would be needed in order to add that to the agenda?
With Gutierrez?
Rough math on that, well, four is fifty percent, three out of eight. You need three, but I defer to
Just to double check though, is it, is it two thirds of the majority of the board or present during, during Lee's?
Two thirds of the board members that are present.
Madam President.
Yes, yes, Mr. Daly.
Judy, I am not one to hold anybody back. And then as I wrote to everyone, my understanding that could be on the agenda if there's no objection. So I will not object to anyone putting whoever they want to put up also for the firm. So unless somebody objects, you can nominate whoever you want in addition.
So it'd just be like an amendment of the current resolution that's on there or is it a whole separate resolution?
You make a separate resolution, that's all.
Is that something we do now or?
That's up to you whether you do it now or whether you go into executive session and then come bottom executive session and add it to new business. And switch, switch the order of the agenda.
This for number one or number two?
F O one, but, but Mrs. Beltran's asking about adding another F agenda item.
Why don't we go into executive, then come back and figure it out?
We could discuss, we could discuss it in executive too.
And it, doing the math, it would still be six people because
yeah, thirds of eight would be 5.3.
Thanks, Frank.
There's the math teacher when we need him.
Yeah, I know money, I don't, fractions aren't my thing.
But the two-thirds only, the two-thirds only comes into play if there's an objection. If there's no objection, you don't need to worry about the thirds.
Okay, so it can be put on, so I can just ask to be, have it put on the agenda, and then it doesn't need a two-thirds vote.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Does anybody have any other, any new business, like a date change? I can't make a motion.
Does there need to be a formal vote for that to cancel a meeting?
Somebody has to make the motion and.
I'll make a mo, make a motion to cancel December 17th meeting.
Uh, motions on the floor by Mr. Passenti to cancel the December 17th, 2020 meeting. There's a second by Mr. Abadrabo. Uh, discussion? Uh, roll call, Mr.?
Yeah, just real quick, is there anything that's going to be coming up that we would need to vote on in that meeting? Is my only concern.
Mr. Casper, from the administration's perspective, no. If, uh, God forbid, there was an emergency meeting needed, we could always call for one if necessary.
Okay.
Yeah, we had the whole discussion and policy about what constitutes an emergency, and then I had gotten some information on to Mr., uh, I sent it to Mr. Uh, Dr. Robert Tozzi. So, uh, we can, we could talk about it again and policy on Tuesday. So with that being said, any more discussion on the date, date change? Uh, Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith?
Yes, uh, I have been one, uh, that has never been in favor of canceling meetings, especially after we have advertised to them. I know there's special circumstances that arise, um, that, uh, something comes up, there's a conflict. I know we've canceled meetings in the past when the All City Band Concert fell on a board meeting night. So there's obviously reasons when to cancel a meeting. But I don't particularly like to vote, uh, on canceling things, um, after we have listed them and advertised them. So just because of those reasons and not because I want to come here by myself, um, I'll be.
Anyone else? Um, Mr. Uci, roll call, please.
Mr. Abadrabo. Oh, I said yes. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Apologize. Ms. Beltran?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Passenti?
Absolutely.
Mr. Smith?
Absolutely not.
Ms. Bassford?
Um, I'm gonna abstain because, uh, um, I, I had questions about the, the way that it was brought up, so I'll discuss that in executive session because it's, I can't say what I want to say on the dais.
Motion carries.
Um, do we have any, what, uh, executive session meeting, uh, minute, uh, items as besides, um, uh, what was that? That was F1?
Professional service contract.
I'm sorry?
Professional service contract, for example, yeah.
So I need a motion to convene in executive session to discuss various personnel and, and a contract. Uh, it was further resolved that, uh, we will announce if there is action taken after the meeting, if we need to reconvene.
Ms. Bassford, excuse me, there was a, a board member who requested a discussion on potential litigation regarding a vendor.
Right.
So that was the other topic for executive.
So that's, add that into it as well. So, um, um, with all due respect, I'm gonna, I, I don't know if this is my purview, but I'm gonna just say this. Being that we're discussing F1, I'm gonna make a suggestion that the attorney sit out and then, or do you want to do the other discussions first and then do that discussion last?
I would recommend doing that, this, doing the potential litigation discussion first.
Okay.
Because the board attorney can give us an update on that.
Okay.
And then, when the board wants to discuss, uh, F1, she can be excused.
Okay, so doing this blindly without getting, getting, getting a five o'clock text. Um, how long do you think we'll be? Anybody have any, uh, guest myths? Because we have to let the public know how long we're gonna be because technically the live, the meeting's still going live.
Just max it to an hour.
At least an hour?
No, max it to an hour.
Max an hour? All right, so I need a motion to go into executive session?
Go move.
Mr. Abadrabo first?
You know what? Actually, you know what? Let me second that. Can Gary, uh, motion that, let it be his last?
Motion.
Okay, um, motion to go into executive session was, um, was made by Mr. Passenti, second by Mr. Abadrabo. Roll call me, Mr. Uci, please.
Sure, and action may be taken, uh, which we just.
Action may be taken.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Abadrabo?
Yes.
Ms. Beltran?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Passenti?
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes, uh, to the public, we should be back out in an hour. Uh, Mr. Mountain, beam us up. I wasn't going to say that.
Okay.
Okay, welcome back from executive session. It's 10:38 PM on Thursday, December 3rd. Then we're going to continue our deliberations on F01. Do I have a motion on that? Anyone?
Be roll call.
Oh, sorry, roll call. Yeah, thank you, Joe.
Mr. Abadraha.
Yes.
Ms. Beltran.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Here.
Mr. Daley.
Yes.
Mr. Casper.
Here.
Mr. Pacenti.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Bassford.
Here.
We have a call.
Okay, so welcome back. It's 10:38. We are going to discuss F1. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Ms. Bassford, to pull it and leave it up to the new board and board president in January.
First by Bohem. Anybody?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Casper. Discussion. All right, roll call.
The table F01. Mr. Abadraha.
Yes.
Ms. Beltran.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Mr. Daley.
Yes.
Mr. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Pacenti.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Bassford.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can I have a motion to close?
I'm moved.
Second. Motion to close by Mr. Casper, second by Mr. Pacenti. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas. Okay, Gary.